President. And Jan has decided to leave us in the pledge. Kim, what do you think she said?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Board mission statement: Tulsa Midway Independent School District educates every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
Thank you, Kim. Public comment, open forum. Public comment of regular board meetings will be conducted in accordance with BED local and the board's procedures on public comment. At meetings other than regular board meetings, public comments are limited to items on the posted meeting notice and agenda. At regular board meetings, comments on other topics may be allowed as time permits. Public comment should be limited to topics irrelevant to district business. Complaints and concerns to which other resolution channels or devices shall be directed through those channels. Comments shall be heard at the beginning of the board meeting. Candace Riker?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Candace Riker and I'm part of the Moms for Liberty group, or nonprofit, for parents, grandparents, community members that would all like to stand together and against government intrusion of parents' rights. Just throwing that out there if any parents are interested in the group. The reason I wanted to speak tonight, I just urge all the members to continue to leave all the health and medical decisions up to the parents regarding any COVID mask mandates. I know that's a topic of the agenda tonight. Also, I'm concerned with a program that is part of y'all's effective school framework. It's the Academy for Urban School Leadership. And I asked the board if Tulsa Midway supports critical race theory. And if not, I highly encourage each member to review their curriculum, which is an anti-racist, government-inclusive curriculum. So I know some of these programs, the curricula, there's so much to it and there's a lot that can get mixed in. And so my question is, if the board supports critical race theory? And if not, to please review that program.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate that. Discussion action items. First, we have six reports we have here tonight. The first one is student enrollment attendance. Ms. Corr.
We wanted to let you know how our attendance has been changing a little bit. You have a paper on your screen. In 2017-18, we started with 3,931 students. In 2018-19, we moved to 3,913. When we hit the pandemic, we lost 18 students. I'm sorry, from 18-19 to the pandemic, we lost 18 students. Then with the pandemic, we lost 79. And currently, we're down 100 students for a total of 213 students. And of course, student enrollment is important to us, as well as average daily attendance. We try to keep those attendance numbers up, but we do have people who've been sick or have not been coming for various reasons. And so our attendance percentage is 86.98%. This was at the end of the first six weeks. But we have seen an increase in attendance since this report was done. Just wanted to let you know where we were for the first six weeks. That is monitored on a regular basis.
Thank you, Ms. Corr.
Ms. Corr, excuse me. What date exactly did the end of the six weeks? What was that date?
It was the Friday before Labor Day, right? Yeah, it was the Friday before Labor Day.
So that was September 2nd?
September 3rd.
3rd, September 3rd.
Well, the last class day was August 27th and we went to intercession for that last week of August and the first part of...
Intercession was the week before.
Before.
Yeah. Okay. Our report is a COVID update. Ms. Corr.
Anna Elizondo has the report on COVID.
Good evening, board and members of the faculty. Just a quick update on our COVID numbers. And I give you some information on our breakdown of our positive cases since July 14th, when we brought the students back, through September 15th. September 15th is a Wednesday, but that was our cutoff date because our board package would due Thursday at noon. But you can see the totals at the high school. A total, we've had 172 positive cases, the confirmed lab confirmed positive cases. The middle school, 145. Intermediate school, 131. Primary school, 75. ACC, 6. Other, which that means our print shop, maintenance department, administration, anybody or any department that doesn't fall into those schools, is 5. For a total of 534 active cases, we're at 534. But Thursday and Friday, we were up to 538. And then on the active total cases, we were up to 41 because we had four positive cases on Thursday. We didn't have, I think we had one on Friday. That was it. We started testing our staff and our students. Well, we started with our staff before intercession. And we started with the COVID kit that were provided by the health department. Now we're testing students who are in school, who may be exhibiting some symptoms, who are ill, if they have parent consent. And we're also testing staff members who are ill during the day or if they've been in close contact with a positive person. And we test them. If they want to stay in school, they can stay in school and we test them every other day for up to 10 days. So we have used 117 tests. We've tested 14 students. And our positive cases have been five. And that's counting our Friday. Those are the numbers that the testing that we've done. Any questions on the numbers?
So your total numbers are both staff and students?
Yes. Was that 538? Yes.
Well, even down there at the bottom, on your testing dates.
On our testing, total staff tested 117. Total students, 114. Out of all those, John, we have five positive, that's staff and students.
Does that include the every other day testing?
The what?
Does that mean that...
Yes. That's the every other day testing.
It's the same number?
Mm-hmm, yes. Just to give you a quick update on the second page, this is just the required action. If you remember, when we first started school, TA really had backed off and had asked us to back off and it was just kind of like, hands off, hands off. And I was kind of surprised at that because I knew that COVID was not gone. So I just thought to myself, well, as the numbers start to increase, we're going to see some more guidelines implemented. Sure enough, we're back to where we were last year, with the exception that we don't have to do investigative reports for contact tracing for students. We don't have to do that. And we were doing that last year, if you remember. We're sending all these students home. We don't have to do that. But basically, required actions for positive cases, we still have to report it to the health department. We still have to report it to the health services. If we have a confirmed case, a positive COVID case, we have to notify all teachers, staff, and families in a classroom or extracurricular activities. And we're doing that through a text and then that'll direct them to a letter that we have on the website. And I don't know if some of you remember, but when we first started last year, we didn't know what we were doing. And you can ask some of these principals. But if we had a positive case of a student, we were sending out letters. And we mailed like 200 or 300 letters and then we couldn't keep up with the letters. We said, forget the letters, we're going to go to phone calls. So then we started doing phone calls. Then the community got mad at us because we were calling to them too often. So then we started, we went to text because the community was saying, you're just calling us too often. So we went through text, so we continued with that. On the, if you come back with a COVID positive result or you're suspected of being actively sick with COVID or you received a positive test for COVID, you have to stay out for 10 days at least or until your symptoms get better. Till your symptoms get better, okay? Close contact, we don't have to do investigative reports, but staff members who are in close contact, if they remain at work, we have to test you every other day or periodically. But we chose every other day for up to 10 days. And that's what we're doing within our district. Any questions on what we're doing with COVID? Are mothers, we should be declining a little bit as a school district? So for us, I think that's good. But today we had four. Friday we had one and we were real happy. It's not like 22. Remember when we had 22 in one day at the middle school? We were just up there. So it seems to have been better. Any questions?
It's getting more manageable, correct?
More manageable is correct.
And it's easier to keep up with and as far as tracking it.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation is campus showcase at primary. That was interesting.
Yes, what we're trying to do is to put the focus on students during this meeting. And Mrs. D'Avila is going to tell you about primary. And each meeting, we want to have a different campus reporting to you so they get a chance to share some good things that are going on.
So good afternoon, evening, board members and members of our audience. I'm really excited to be here to let you know what has been going on at the primary campus since the beginning of school. A lot of hard work and dedication from our teachers and students has been going on. So this is just a little showcase of what has been going on. So I put the sky is the limit because that is the theme for our school year this year. That was put up to the staff last year in a contest and everyone submitted ideas and they voted and they came up with this theme. So this is staff-created theme because after everything we've been through, we know that the sky is the limit for us. So everything you're going to see is based around that theme. Of course, I'm Laura D'Avila, the proud principal of the primary school. And I do have my assistant principals here with me, Ms. Lupe Chapa and Ms. Nadia de la Serna. So we're really excited to be here tonight. Just a little bit of information on our school. The number of staff on my campus is 97. The number of early education students is 11. That includes all our NIM students, who are students who don't come, but they are for, do come to school for services such as speech and so forth. Pre-K, we have 91 students currently enrolled in pre-K. Kinder, 238. First grade, 286. And second grade is my grade level that we're just exploding at and that is 308 students there. Here are the number of classes. Our early education, which is our, used to be called PPCD. That's the early special education classroom. And we have one of those classrooms. We did upgrade into two adaptive ed classrooms because of the need. So we have two adaptive ed classrooms. We recently added a fifth pre-K teacher because we started the school year with four, so we are now at five. We have 13 kinder teachers, 14 first grade classrooms, and of course, 15 second grade classrooms. So you can see how that aligns to our student enrollment in those grade levels. So when I was thinking of what is it that I really want to tell you about the primary campus and what's going on, I have selected balanced literacy and guided math as, I know it was one, but these are the two areas that we're really focusing on at the primary school this year. Now, this didn't come overnight. How did this get started? This has actually been part of the work that I did when I was in the previous position that I was in and working with our teachers and finding out what is the needs of our campus and the needs for teachers to be able to know their curriculum and to know exactly what it is that they need to be teaching. So it started off as a campus needs assessment. What is it that our campus needs? And how can we support our intermediate goals? So that came across and that was through our site-based committee. And when we started this process, I didn't have full buy-in from my teachers, so we put it off. And then as the need arose, we saw the benefits of being able to implement both balanced literacy and guided math. Along with that, we did have some requirements from House Bill 3, which were the reading academies that we've been talking about, which are for teachers that teach kinder through third grade, that they have to, by next year, all those teachers have to attend the reading academies. We also, this aligns with our board adopted goals that we did previously last year submit to you and were adopted. And of course, the ongoing notion that our teachers need to be highly effective. And so this revolves around those key areas. So the first, what I want to talk to you about is balanced literacy. It's a framework, okay? So it's the same reading, but it's the framework in which the teachers are presenting the lessons to the students. It helps them towards proficiency and lifelong reading. It's characterized by explicit skill instruction and by the use of authentic texts. So we're really diving into those rich literature. Teachers are meeting with the kids, are working in small groups, and that's where that's coming from. Now, there are components to it and that's what's listed there. It's literacy stations. So students are working in small groups. It's guided reading. The teachers are doing small lessons with the kids and then reinforcing it with activities. Readers workshop, that's when the teachers are reading with the kids and they're reading all kinds of texts. They're doing shopping for books and stuff like that. The next one is writers workshop. And the last one is word study. So that encompasses everything that we're doing in balanced literacy. The next one is guided math. And guided math is also a framework, but it's working with students in math in small groups, almost like balanced literacy, but this is the math component. And we're really excited about this because teachers are pulling small groups, working with kids on hands-on activities. And it strengthens the relationships between the students and the teachers and then it helps build on those skills that they really need to work on. Of course, parts of this is hands-on math stations and small group lessons. So what's next? Now, we've been in school for one, six weeks and almost half of the next one. And we've only had three professional development days, but the teachers at the primary school have had eight days of professional development. We've done some flexible scheduling. We're contracted with Melissa Leach from Leach's Literacy and they have come in on their days off. We have done some flexible scheduling within the school day. And so we're going to continue that. Now, if we think about this, we're like freshmen on the campus. This is our first year. And this is not a one year and we're done. It's a three-year long-range plan. We're doing components and we're systematically implementing those components. So right now, we're in year one. And what we're working on are the stations. We're working on shared reading and we're working on guided reading only. Of course, we're doing the other components still because we still need word study. We still need writers workshop. But we want to make sure that we get that firm foundation for us to be able to build and help our students when it comes to reading. We're going to continue to progress, monitor our students' growth. If it's something that we're really invested in, we want to make sure that it's gaining those yields. And how we're going to do this through formal and informal assessments. And of course, evaluate the effectiveness through teacher feedback, program feedback, and then of course, student data. So my second grade GT students put together a little video. And I don't know if you can hear at the very beginning, but their thing is, where have all their teachers gone? So that's kind of what the video is about, so. So that is a presentation from our kiddos. And they've seen a difference in learning and our teachers have too. If you haven't already done so, we invite you to follow us on our social media pages, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We are posting almost daily pictures of what's happening in our school. We want for parents to feel connected to the learning and we want them to see exactly the wonderful things that are happening at the primary school. As a token of thanks, we called, we asked some students to tell us what it meant to be a warrior. So they made an acrostic poem and we kind of dazzled it up, but the students, the students' work is on the back of the poem itself. Thank you.
You're welcome. Their actual handwritten poem is on the back of the poem.
Thank you. Those are words that they came up with when they thought about what it is to be a warrior. Thank you so much.
Laura, thank you very much. I think the best part of an in-board meeting is seeing kids and what they're doing in our district. So thank you so much.
Great job.
It was, it was fun showcasing what, the great work that our teachers and students and everyone is doing. And it's a team effort and it's really the positivity of what's coming out of it has really been what's, what's helped us get through this year and coming together and collaborating and working together.
Like I said, it's always wonderful to see the kids and teachers working and interacting with them. It's wonderful. Very good. Next one is effective school framework overview.
Dr. White has prepared information for you on effective schools. Effective schools research has actually been around for more than 25 years. Texas Education Agency just recently highlighted it for the framework for all the plans that they have for school improvement. And it gives us, might say, an outline for what we're going to use for our district improvement plans and campus improvement plans this year. So he's going to give you an overview tomorrow when we have our staff meeting. He's going to present this to the principals and directors so that we can all get on board the same philosophy.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, board members and members of the audience. I am here to present for you the effective schools framework, the quick overview. So what is the effective schools framework? It is essentially a framework that is comprised of five levers. The five levers are strong school leadership and planning on the outside and as it bubble wraps, the four other components, strategic staffing, high-quality instructional materials and assessments, positive school culture, and at the heart of the framework, effective instruction. And as the levers are outlined right there, there are four key components that help make the framework work, beginning with the district commitments, followed by the essential actions, which each of the levers have the essential actions, but also they have a foundational essential action that we will focus on for each of the five levers. And then, of course, as we discuss and review all of the levers, we will review the key practices within each. The purpose of the ESF, there are three main areas of focus. Common language, so as we review and discuss the framework, it'll help us from a district level and the campus level, the principals, to be a, on a shared level of understanding of how we can work together in order to accomplish the goals that we've set forth in our campus improvement plan and also in our evaluation as far as T-Pass and T-Test is concerned. Continuous improvement is part of that process as well. It'll help with us being able to define goals, able to refine goals as we move forward and through the framework as well as through our T-Test and T-Pass. And then, of course, the alignment. When we talk about the framework, it'll help bring together, like I said earlier about T-Pass and the evaluation system with that, T-Test, that evaluation system for teachers, but also the improvement plans that we see at the campus and at the district. The ESF framework helps create a focal point so that when we meet and discuss goals, areas of improvement or areas of opportunity, it just allows us to have common language and understanding of where we are and where we are trying to go, both as a district and as a campus. And so there are five levers, the first one being strong school leadership and planning. And this lever focuses on developing campus instructional leaders. And each lever is followed with success criteria, which is also going to allow us to talk about key artifacts from the criteria. And so one of the areas that we will focus on in lever one will be developing admin calendars, developing instructional calendars that focus on administration, administration walking in and observing classrooms and allowing for that to be a cyclical feedback that helps maintain integrity of the walkthroughs throughout the entire year. Lever two is strategic staffing. Here, this is about recruiting, selecting and assigning, injecting and retaining a full staff of highly qualified educators. And success criteria for this, if you look at the first bullet point, you'll note that there are targeted sources, colleges, ESCs, and ACPs with ongoing and reoccurring relationships. And one of the areas that we will focus on is trying to develop more of our alternative certification program partnerships so that as we pull from the universities, we are also looking at the rural setting and the business industry to understand who those prospective candidates are and how we can better recruit them as well. The third lever is positive school culture. We will work on both 3.1 and 3.2, but specifically 3.2 as relates to ensuring that each campus has a student behavioral management plan as well as a district belief system that is aligned to each of the campuses' student behavior plans. And of course, the criteria that follows. And then lever four, talking about high-quality instructional materials, also known as curriculum, and then really focusing again on developing calendars and structures so that throughout the year, at any time, we have a plan and a process for what we are wanting to see in the classrooms. And again, successful criteria for this goes back to really streamlining expectations as far as top-down alignment from our administrative calendars, our instructional walkthroughs and observational feedback cycles, and then really making sure that our best practices within the classroom, one of which we heard tonight about blended literacy, is happening and how we can all talk about that in the same way so that as a high school principal can understand what's happening at the primary campus and so forth. And the last area, lever five, effective instruction. Again, this just goes back to developing solid classroom routines and procedures for instruction. And again, looking at the criteria for that is a theme hopefully emerging here with really having everything outlined and calendared in a way where we are building in our own accountability by saying what we are going to do on paper and then following through with all that. And then the timeline for the ESF starts tonight, but really begins tomorrow with our Tuesday principals meeting. We will review the framework through this PowerPoint and we will then kind of move into the activities that we will have done for each of the five levers. And then at the end of this semester, as we make our way through the ESF, we will evaluate the study and then determine if any of the things that we have reviewed and discussed could be possibly implemented whether second semester or in future school years. And that concludes the ESF presentation for tonight.
You'll be going into more depth in this with the principals and developing the plans and it's going to be by the end of this, by the end of the year.
Yes, sir. That is the hope. And then, of course, trying to, trying to make sure we're connecting the framework to evaluations, to instruction, just making sure that everything is aligned so that as we talk, it makes sense as we connect all pieces because sometimes we know what we're talking about and we understand how that's going to work, but when we're all together and making sure that there is an alignment from the top down, whether we're talking about the district level all the way down to students, we need to be talking and making sure that our practices are the same.
That's very good. Alignment always makes things much smoother.
Working smarter and not harder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Park, excuse me. In this, in this ESF, is this, is this room parallel with the, with the survey that we ran back, I guess, early January about the school systems and how the effectiveness and all of this? Is this part of this program? Is it still the same company?
It's not the same per se, but you'll see a lot of patterns emerge through the ESF because the ESF really helps focus surveys, needs assessment down into these five levers that have been identified that any effective school that has been identified as such has these five levers, which typically stems from surveys and campus needs assessments. And this really just helps kind of package it all together in a very common language, easy-to-use sort of way so that as we move through it, it'll make sense for all campus principals, but also the district as well.
That's an action plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So what happened to the other program? Did we just do away with it?
No, not per se. It's just, again, some of the things that we do don't always align or kind of follow in that type of sequential order. So what the ESF is going to do is try to bring some of the things that we've currently have done already together so that as we move forward and work on campus improvement plans and things like that, it'll just help us make sure that we're not leaving anything out, like a survey or something we've done in the past. We're going to bring it all together and the ESF will help with that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Exciting.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. 2021 STAR results. These are preliminary.
Yes. I have for you the reports of STAR that was taken last spring. As you may recall, there was no STAR or end of course test taken in winter training. But I want to start off with a little bit of analogy to explain approaches meets expectations and masters. Let's just say, for example, we're all on bicycles. Everybody in this room has a bicycle and we're going to gather somewhere around Tolosa Road or Clarkwood Road with our bicycles on an early Saturday morning. And we've decided as a, as a bicycle group that we're going, our, our goal is to get to Violet Road and we're going to go down Leopard on a bicycle. It's going to be a rough trip, you know? But anyway, this is how we're starting. And so we all take off and we reach Rand Morgan Road. And that means approaches. We're getting closer to our goal. We're approaching it, but we're not really where we need to be yet. And we continue on down the, on Leopard and we get to McKenzie Road. That's working on grade level. I see, I think, well, that's pretty good to work on grade level, but what about those that are super achievers on the bicycles and they want to go all the way to Violet Road? And you'll know you're there because you've got HEB and Walgreens and it's kind of exciting to be at Violet Road because it's, you know, lots of lights and noise and that's where you really want to be. But that's not where we can all reach because it's much more difficult to get to, to masters. So when you think about meets and masters, meets expectations means that you're working on grade level and we certainly know that students rise above that and we want to continue to encourage that. So what I've done is I've analyzed the scores and where we are highest in our scores would be on meets expectations is third grade, English Language Arts and Reading, fourth grade, English Language Arts, Reading and Writing, because the writing test is taken in fourth grade, fifth grade, English Language Arts, Reading, Math and Science, sixth grade, English Language Arts and Reading, seventh grade, English Language Arts, Reading and Math, and eighth grade, English Language Arts, Reading and Science. Then where we need improvement in math is third grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, eighth grade, and in the eighth grade, we need help with social studies also. And what I did was to compare where the state has scored, where the region two students have scored, and Tolosa Midway scores. If you look on the second page, I have the STAR end of course, of course, that's grades nine through 12. And where we're, we're really proud to be meeting expectations is in Biology, English One, English Two, and US History. Where we really need help reaching grade level is Algebra One. And so as we begin developing our campus and district improvement plans, this is only one segment we're going to be looking at as how we need improvement. So we know we have a math issue. We're not the only ones in the state that have a math issue. There are others as well. And then you have a sheet in here that has numbers and then we have bar charts. Go to the next one. On this chart, the blue is approaches, the orange one is meets, and the gray one is masters. So you'll see we have quite a few students at approaches and that's great. They're on the way to reaching their goal. But the orange is meets expectations and the gray is masters. And this is comparing us against ourselves. This is not what I said earlier about comparing to state and region. So this is how our scores turned out. And then the next one, you have fourth grade reading with the same colors. And in fifth grade, then sixth grade reading, seventh grade reading, eighth grade reading, then writing grade four, and writing grade seven. Then we get into English One, ninth grade, English Two, 10th grade, social studies, grade eight, and US History. We only test the history twice, once in the eighth grade and once at high school. And then you have, go through the math. And you see, we're, again, in math, we're doing really well at approaches, but we need to move more towards on-grade level. So as you kind of thumb through these. You see that red line for being on grade level is coming up and going down in some of the courses. That's all I have for you tonight. We will be going and giving you more score reports as we begin developing campus and district improvement plans, but this will get you started on what we did last spring. Thank you.
Long story here, there's something going on in that fifth grade because you notice it, it's, it's the higher, you know, in 2021, all the way back. If you follow it, in the fifth grade, there's something, something going on there.
Maybe some good teaching.
I imagine that's what it looks like to me. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Core. Career technology, career technology education. That was very impressive.
Dr. White has developed a PowerPoint on career technical education and this lovely brochure. And what I would like to do with the brochure is to let people know all the wonderful things Tolosa Midway is doing in CTE. I think we have many wonderful things going on in this district, but we're not talking about it. It's not a secret that we're great. You know, we have wonderful programs going on and we'd like to let people know about it. And this brochure would then, could go out to real estate companies, be available in various places so that if people are choosing a school, they come to Tolosa Midway. And so I asked him to gather a brochure that would have all the many things that we are offering.
I think we need to mail them to parents in the community so that everybody knows what we're offering.
Yes, we're going to make lots of copies and you'll see these around town as well as at our events, at the high school. It's going to be everywhere. So the brochure in your hand will also accompany the presentation you'll see for you. So the presentation tonight will kind of go into a bit more of length, but the brochure really captures the heart of the presentation tonight. So some program updates for this school year as they relate to career and technical education and, of course, just kind of starting at the beginning with laying the foundation for CTE. Just a brief review of our mission, vision, objectives. Real quickly, looking at our new and improved department website. So just clicking here and courtesy of Tricia's team and bringing us the new website here. We've taken advantage of this by updating the CTE portion of this. So you can see just kind of where we're at with the mission, vision, and objective. So you can see just kind of where we're at with the mission, vision, and objectives. And then to the left, you can see just how we've outlined what we have and what we're offering in terms of our dual-credit certificate programs and courses. I'll click here, just kind of show you guys the programs of study and what this looks like. Currently, we are focused on three endorsement areas. And then, of course, within these endorsement areas are our programs of study. And then just, again, clicking here allows you to see a little caption over the program. And of course, within these clusters, the programs of study here, click on that, and it will bring you more information about that pathway. So this is just kind of letting you guys see the website and how we are trying to boost that in terms of communicating our information about our programs. And then, of course, the brochure will help with that as well. Okay. From the website, and just making sure that we are publishing the most updated information as it relates to CTE, we are also currently tracking and monitoring program data, as well as tracking the data, but making sure that as we are tracking and monitoring, we are cleaning up any misalignments or disconnects in our programs to make sure that what we are offering our students allows them a pathway to some form of certification or some sort of career preparation program that allows them to walk away with something tangible in their hands upon graduation. And then the last piece of this is our strategic planning that this presentation will outline for you. Real quickly, just a quick review of our mission, vision, and objectives. We have five objectives. The first one really focuses on career readiness. The second one focuses on a district streamlined program. Number three really focuses on a industry collaboration and partnership, as does number four. And then number five, really talking about making sure that we are celebrating and recognizing students and parents, as well as community members that are partaking in our CTE program. So what does this all look like as far as it relates to tracking and monitoring the data? Well, there's lots of CTE data that comes our way, whether it's from the federal level, whether it's from the state level, or it's just district-level data. So in terms of going from broad to more narrow, we are focusing on four key areas. Being the regional labor market, we're going to focus on the federal Perkins Grant and those indicators. We are also currently working our way through our new CT auto coding and what that will do as far as updating our systems, updating our funding, but also updating our programs. And then, of course, how all this ties into CCMR accountability. So looking quickly at the Coastal Bend Regional Labor Market, you'll note on the pie chart that there are three kind of big slices there that you'll see that are aligned to what we are offering in our career clusters and our programs of study. The Leisure and Hospitality, Education and Health Services, and Trade, Transportation, and Utilities. So as we are looking at the current labor market in our area, it is nice to know that what we are offering at our high school aligns really nicely to the needs of our labor market. As far as what we are offering in alignment to the market, we are currently cleaning up some of our coding as it relates to the new coding that has come forth through the Perkins Five and the CCMR accountability. So what this means is that as we indicate students based on their CTE participation, the state has devised a new way to indicate CTE participation, all the way through students who do not participate as a not CTE indicator, all the way through a CTE completer, meaning a student makes their way all the way through a pathway and is able to earn completer status by showing that they've completed a full pathway. And in between, we have participants, explorers, and then we have concentrators. And so we are currently still learning a little bit about that, since this is all relatively new for this school year. And like I said, as we are making our way through our new E-School Plus system, we are making those auto coding updates in the system as we speak. Perkins Five, typically when we talk about accountability, we just focus on the accountability, TEAs, accountability kind of plan. When it comes to Perkins Five, there are indicators that we are being measured by. As you can see with the green boxes, those are the areas that we are leading the state in as a district, and then the red boxes is where the state is leading us in a little bit. But as you can tell, we are not too far off. But the one key area that kind of brings us back to the original previous slide, which was the completer status, knowing that in terms of our program quality, we could be producing more completers. And as you will learn more through this presentation, the whole goal now from the state is to try to graduate as many completers as we possibly can. On these slides here, I've just outlined for you our certifications that we offer as they are aligned to our career and programs of study. And so we currently offer 20 programs of study. We have nine career clusters, and according to our new brochure, we offer 43 certifications. And you can see them here, which simply indicates that our students have lots of choice. So how do we track all this? Well, one way we do this is through CTE certification trackers. So what we do is, based on the certification we offer, we house all this information into one spreadsheet. Each tab gets a certification, and we are tracking teachers and classes with students in each, and we are monitoring their progress towards earning a certification. And you can see here, based on how we are tracking, based on how our students are earning, that we are above as a district from the region and also the state levels. And particularly in the last school year, in 2021, we were about double the region and the state as far as how many students are earning certifications upon graduation. Level one, level two certifications are a little bit more challenging to offer, and also a little bit more difficult to earn as well, but we are right at the region and state averages, which is really, really good. Also, we are tracking CCMR accountability period, whether that is related to CTE and the career readiness, or if it's related to college readiness. We are tracking all that data to make sure that all students on some level are earning a CCMR point. But the majority of our students are earning that CCMR point through the career readiness indicators. So as a district and state, you can see by grade level where Tolosa is compared to the state. As you make your way backwards, starting with 12th grade, you can see that we are around 61% of our graduating students are earning a CCMR point, which is definitely above the state average as it is the junior year. But as you can see in the freshman and sophomore years, we can do a little bit more of a concentration effort at those levels to ensure that we are not waiting until the junior or senior year to help our students earn that point, but we are starting as soon as we get them, perhaps even earlier in the middle schools, to ensure that all students know and are on a path towards earning a CCMR point. And this is just another slide that captures part of our strategic planning when it comes to making sure that our programs are articulated and aligned all the way through. And again, one of the ways that we are tracking that data is through our IBCs, our industry-based certifications. So one of the other cool areas that makes Tolosa special is our dual-credit and certificate programs. Currently, we are kind of focused on two key program-level certificate areas, one of which being our welding program. And you can see our students here have been very successful. And our other key program is our Diesel and Heavy Equipment. This is the program where we are recognized as the first high school in the state as far as being able to offer the AED certificate to our students, which essentially means that we have a fully accredited program, where if students make their way all the way through the program, they can essentially walk away with the certificates needed to begin employment immediately with a dealership or a mechanic shop, anything that would be related to their certificate. One way we are helping kind of support the whole child nature of CTE is through our clubs and our organizations. These are known as CTSOs in the CTE world. We currently offer nine of those. This right here is just a quick kind of glance at our catalog. The CTE course catalog is embedded into the TMHS course catalog, but it can also be viewed as a separate piece from that if someone was just wanting to look specifically at CTE courses. Also, on the brochure, what you can do is scan the QR code, and by scanning the QR code, it'll bring you to that course catalog. And then on the right side with the career clusters, the programs of study endorsement, that just gives you an idea of how everything is aligned from the state all the way down to the district level. And then from here on out, what you will see on these slides, you will also be able to see if you scan the QR code, which will take you to the course catalog. We have 20 programs of study, each of which offers certifications and Level Four completion status. So each of our programs, whether we're talking about automotive, business, animation concentration, and multimedia, any of our pathways, we are making sure that they have all four levels so that any student who takes each of, any one of these pathways can make their way through, not only become a completer, but also have the opportunity to earn a certificate. And each of these has the same layout. You can see that it's pretty simple and easy to follow. Sometimes when you have too much choice, it confuses, or it can be even confusing on us as the adults as we're trying to manage all these programs, all these classes. So what we've done this full year is really trying to consolidate some of what we would have felt as overlaps in years prior, consolidating our programs so that we are streamlining everything in a very strategic way, so that a student knows that if they are taking something related to human services, they are part of the family, family and consumer science pathway, and that will allow them to stay on that pathway moving forward. One area that does make us unique and is a local, regional pathway of study is the geospatial engineering and land surveying, surveying pathway. This is relatively new as we have created this, but we currently have 91 students in it, so there is a high interest for this, which is great because it is directly related to our area, which means that it's going to be part of one of those high-wage jobs. And then of course, healthcare, law enforcement, marketing, plant science, robotics, and welding. And that was just a quick program overview. I know that's a lot of information, but throughout the year, we will continue to review our programs. And like I said, one of our big key focuses for this school year is making sure that our programs are aligned, not just on paper, but in our system, and as we talk, communicate, and begin working on the course catalog and calendar schedule for our master schedule buildup for next school year. Are there any questions?
Very good. It's good to see this broken down like you have it here. We've heard about it, know about it, but it's better to see it like this because we know it's there, and now we can see. I was amazed that the number, when I was going through it, the number of students that are in each one of the programs. That was amazing, because I was thinking some of them were not making or something, but it looks like they're all doing rather well.
Yes, sir.
I'm impressed with it, so.
We have a great CTE program. We've got great resources. We have great teachers. It's kind of incredible to know that as I work with the department and even in our last department meeting last week, just touching base and checking in with our staff to see where we're at with our professional development and learning that half of them have already been, you know, self-starters on that, and that they don't even need any help from me or anyone else. They already know what their plans are because they're that invested into their programs. So the motivation and the ability to kind of go above and beyond even when they've already done so is really incredible, especially given the fact that during the COVID time and even right now, doing anything related to CTE or work-based training is still somewhat difficult. So not letting that be something to discourage anybody, just really proud and impressed with the team and their ability to continue to do what they need to do in order to offer the very best for our kids.
That was good.
Yes, sir.
I mean, the brochure's okay and stuff, but...
Yeah, it's okay.
My question is, the kids are more in tune with different things than a brochure. So are the young parents. A lot of, even high school parents are in their mid-30s, early 40s. Is there any way that we could do something like this, like in a podcast?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Don't you, would you be able to get any grant money like you did for the other program for podcasts?
I don't see why not. If there's a need for it, we can definitely look into it.
That might be somewhat in touch with, you know, the kids and the younger parents and stuff. I like brochures, but, you know.
Yeah, no, a digital brochure is even better.
Our podcast had 10,000 hits, so.
I'll look into it. I'll keep you updated at the next board meeting.
Dr. Roy, you had 74 kids in our welding program, and I've kind of seen our welding area. Is that sufficient for that number of students?
What do you mean?
I mean, is that enough room for them to, I mean, I realize they're not all there...
Yeah, they're not all there at once.
But I mean, still, when their projects are being created, they've got to be out somewhere.
Well, here's the thing. With our welding, half of it's done here, and some of it's done also at Delmar and at the Craft Training Center. It depends on where they're at in the program.
Because I also noticed you had some AWS certifications. Do we have quite a few students going into that? I mean, that's, that's really walking out of here with them. They can take that through marketing and sales into everything else.
We don't have as many right now because we're still building the program.
So that's one of the newest portions of that.
Yes, that's something we're currently adding right now. So it will only, at this current time, probably impact maybe 10, maybe 12 students. But starting next year, it should be in the 20s. And by the third year, it should be in the 40s or 50s, where as we build the program and we have the capstone there, we'll be able to sell that as a, as a good point to the students, hopefully at the middle school level, to know that if they enter this program eighth grade, ninth grade year, this is something that they can walk away with. We weren't able to do that until this year.
Great. And once again, those podcasts would help in recruiting kids.
Absolutely. Is there anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. To discuss and consider out-of-state field trip for ROTC, Paris Island, June 5th to the 11th of 2022, and high school band and choir to Orlando, Florida, May 3rd to June 5th, 2022.
All right, you have requests from ROTC going to Jacksonville and so on, and Florida State University. I ask our commander, is that your title? Is your title commander?
Joe. Joe Harmon.
He is your commander.
Did you see any questions about this?
I think I know all of you. This is a repeat request from the last two years. It's gotten canceled due to COVID. This is my, beginning my seventh year at TM, my 12th year in the ROTC program. And until the last two years, I've taken 45 or so kids every year on a field trip across the country to rural, okay? This is the trip of a lifetime for most of these kids. It absolutely is. We do things that they will probably never get to do again the rest of their lives, but they learn from it, and it is building. We're not part of the CTE program technically, I guess, but we could be, because my kids are the... but we could be because my kids are those kids, are the CTE kids. They take welding. They take auto shop. Just had a kid last year at the diesel program. He had a choice, join the Army or go in the diesel apprenticeship program. And he's a cat right now, working as a diesel apprentice, I guess. So we have the same kids, the same goals. We have to make them do something good after high school, whatever that is, and this trip is part of that. We go to Jacksonville, Florida. We spend the night. We get up the next morning and we tour naval aviation facilities, helicopters, airplanes, and more important contractors. Because not everybody's going to join the military, but you got to do something after high school. So we let them talk to the contractors, the welders, the plumbers, the electricians, the guys that support the naval mission. The afternoon is spent at the ship on, in the Mayport Naval Station. So they get to go on a ship. They get to talk to the sailors. What do you do? How do you do it? But they also get to talk to the dock people, the contract workers that are servicing the ships. What's all this welding stuff going on? How do you do this? How do you get into this? So it's a really educational forum. The next morning, we get up and we go to the Army Base up in Georgia. We spend a day at the Army Base looking at all their assets and talking to the same contractors and people, what they do. How do they do it? How do I get into this? So it's very educational forum. And then we hit Paris Island for three days of fun with the Marines. That's mostly just physical labor for about three days with drill instructors, which is good for them. It brings them, it builds character, self-discipline, motivation. They work as a team and it's just a great time for the kids. We get in a bus to come home and that's where we stop at Florida State University. I want them to see a university. I want them to see a real college, a big university, the stadium, the kids. We take a walking tour of the campus. They get to eat lunch with the students while they're at the university. So they can say, eh, it's not really for me. I think I want to go the contractor route or the trade route. Or maybe I can go to college. Maybe I will go to college. Not all my kids are interested in college. They're not. I get about three or four a year that join the military and one or so every year that I can get a full ride military scholarship for. And that's been my average, one per year. And about 26 kids have joined the military since I've been here. They're doing well. They're doing okay. They like life. Life-changing experience for them. But the other 90 kids, they got to do something. They got to do something in their life that they can support themselves and do it professionally and maybe support a family as well, depending on how they do in life. So that's our goal, kind of like CTE. Gives them, we don't have a certificate. We're not, you know, funded the way CTE is funded, but it's the same goal. Give these kids a chance at life after high school. Always successful 100%? Who knows? Once they graduate, some of them, I just don't hear from them again. I wish I could tell you. I knew where every single one of them is, but I don't. But the vast majority of them, I can tell you they're doing okay. They're doing okay in life. We don't teach them everything about life, but we do teach them the basics. Work as a team, respect yourself, respect your coworkers, and do a good job the best you can every day. That seems to work. It's not perfect, but it works. Works for our kids and that's really why we go on this trip. It's not to get them to join the military. It's not. It's to get them to be better people after they graduate high school. That's the goal. Any questions from anybody? Our interim superintendent came down and visited us the other day or last week. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
I enjoyed it.
See our faces?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you have a total of 45, how many chaperones do you take?
We take five chaperones.
Are they parents? Are they school employees?
Generally, myself and my teaching partner, War and Officer Escal. Usually the Marine or freezer goes with us because they just like to go to Paris Islands and marine thing. And then we have a couple of moms that go with us for the female cadets. So there's two moms with the female cadets because they sleep in separate barracks. So we need guidance and supervision at that end. I can't go in and do it, so we need a couple of moms.
So it's either TM personnel or parents?
Or parents of the cadets, yes.
It's always been a well-received program from what we've heard in the past.
We're growing. We took a hit over COVID. I mean, we just were not allowed to do anything with the kids. Couldn't go on field trips, couldn't have a military ball, couldn't do Paris Island. You know, word gets out, eh, this place is no fun. But now we're back open. My administration is opening the doors for us. We've got Cal Allen heavily involved in our program now. They send kids over every day to be in our program because they like it so much. So we're growing and growing. Great support from the administration. Couldn't ask for better. I know he's new to the job, but he has just done a great job and thank you, sir. Appreciate your assistance. But that's what we did. We try real hard just to give these kids a chance at life. And we try every day. I wish I had a bride basket to give them something. Your own cannon shell or something.
There's always mixture.
We go on a ship. They save their used cannon shells for us and they give each kid a cannon shell as a memento as they're leaving the ship, so it's kind of cool. But do I have any other questions? I'd be glad to answer them or try to answer them as best I can for you. Every day is a challenge, just like every class in school. It's a challenge, but we're there.
Okay, before we vote on your trip, we have the band and choir wanting to take a trip to Orlando, Florida. Is someone here who's going to speak on that?
My name is Ralph Morales. I'm the band director at the high school.
Good evening. My name is Oscar. I'm the choir director here at the high school.
And one of the things that we've tried to do, like this is his second year here, we've tried to collaborate more amongst our students in the music building, so to speak, band and choir. Last year, we were able to do something for graduation since we're not able to be there live at a graduation. So I think our kids had a really good time collaborating with each other. And one of the things we spoke about is one of the things really missing with our band program and our choir program is the aspect that the kids have fun with each other. You know, everything is work, 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 practice, practice, practice. Be here at seven in the morning, be here late on Friday nights. We got back at almost 2:00 o'clock this past Friday from La Fabia. One of the components of the kids' statement band is to do the fun activities. And the thing that we do most for our kids is in form of an end-of-year trip, where it's, while it's a leisure trip, there is something that we're going to include as a leadership component this year. I know a lot of things that Disney does through youth programs is performances. But in my experience of taking groups to Disney, we're not always guaranteed those performances because of weather. I've taken a couple of trips over there where we're ready for the parade and it's only 20 minutes. There's a lightning. I'm going to put on another 30 minutes. You know what, guys? Sorry, we're just going to cancel the parade. So it's happened to us twice, not with our district, but another district that I've worked with. So now that they're offering a leadership component to the students, we feel that's the route I want to take this year to where we don't have to worry about, you know, taking instruments, uniforms, but we know that the students will fulfill the educational component of this trip. Just like the ROTC mentioned where, you know, they do the work first and then we will have some fun with the kiddos. I don't know if you all have a packet with you all, majority of you ones. The majority of the cost will be coming from food, from parents' out-of-pocket expenses, along with some of our band parent fundraisers and some of the fundraisers that we do through our activities on campus.
Well, one of the big things in the packet, so two years ago, while I was student teaching here in the district, the choir had a trip planned as well to Disney. And as soon as all the COVID stuff happened and we started going in the lockdown, trips canceled. And, you know, there wasn't really anything riding about, you know, how much money you're going to get back, what the return policy is on that. And this company did a really, really good job outlining all that. I believe on page 4.
The cancellation schedule is 4.
Cancellation schedule. So it has it listed based off of percentages. So we know 120 to 91 days prior to the trip. If it's canceled, 25% stays with the company. And then in increments of 30 days from there on out, they keep their percentage. Speaking with Mr. Morales, he brought to my attention on page six, the Acts of God, number 12. Tours canceled due to an external event that is unforeseeable and unavoidable. And then it lists, you know, reasons of war, riots, strikes, acts of God, infectious disease. We have different options on how to move forward with the trip, one of them being money, I believe, what is it? Stays with the company based on where we're at in the percentage, you know, payment schedule. We can always move the trip to a later date or we can choose to find a comparable trip to attend at the same time. I personally like this having it on there because, you know, when all this stuff started happening with the COVID lockdown and parents are wondering, well, where's the money? Where's the money? We didn't really have any answers. This kind of makes it real transparent from the start, letting everybody know, here's what you can expect from the get-go. You know, here's the exact cost. This is everything that is included. However, in the event that we might not be able to make the trip because we don't know what's going to happen a year from now, we are all in agreement that, you know, this amount will stay with the travel company, but you are guaranteed, you know, X percentage.
And pretty much it's like having a family trip to Disney. I have family members that were supposed to go in June and will sit down for a certain amount of time. They had the opportunity to schedule it later on when everything will be back to normal. And out of those three options, obviously, you know, we don't want anyone to be needing any kind of money, especially if it's out of pocket. I think if for some reason the venue were closed around the time we're scheduled to go, we would look at either an alternate location to travel or postpone the trip for a later time to where there's no money lost on the students or the parents.
How does that work for your seniors?
They wouldn't be able to travel with us assuming that the district allows them to travel on the trip. And obviously, it would be a special situation where we wouldn't open it to any senior that wasn't originally born on the trip. We don't want to get a section canceled.
And I have the same question I had for that gentleman. Your chaperones, are they going to be school employees and parents?
Yes, we start with a band staff and obviously the choir staff. And then any additional depends on, we usually try to do a one to eight ratio. Pretty much it ends up being, since the students will be set up in what they call a quad occupancy, so four students per room. Usually what we do is one adult would be in charge of eight kids. So it would be a little bit lower than the one to 10 ratio that is recommended for us. So once we hit our numbers, as they were taking 100 kids and we've already maxed out our band staff and choir staff, then what's okay, we need X amount of parents to help chaperone.
Band boosters?
Band boosters, yes. And we try with the people that have been, you know, helping with fundraisers, concession stands. They have their own protocol that they're doing currently to keep track of whose hours and so to speak.
So how many kids are in the band and the choir?
We currently have 140 in band.
I currently have 67 in choir.
Okay. And then in your program, how many are in your program? Will you be taking all of them or just?
Forty-five maximum.
Okay. I'm just trying to see how many kids are not going to be a part of the field trips.
And we don't take seniors either.
Now, the students do have the option, the parents as well, not allowing their kids to go. Obviously, with COVID concerns, some parent might say, you know what? I'd rather you not go with this one. And obviously, the other thing is the financial aspect because a lot of it will be out of pocket. There's no way the student can really fundraise the entire amount without having some out-of-pocket expenses. So the parents, you know, we've had meetings with the parents already and they know, we actually have an apparent meeting tomorrow so that they all know this is going to be the contract where they present to y'all, sign it, so on and so forth. But we know that not all kids will be able to financially commit to the trip. So out of the one pool that we have, I'm anticipating anywhere between 70 to 100 kids that would be able to financially pay for the trip.
Combined or?
I don't know. I think...
Oh, is how many are you saying?
Thirty have expressed interest and that's with, you know, me talking to the parents and them saying, well, you know what? If it gets approved, we'll find a way to...
Is this going to be a bus trip or air flight or?
This plan is to fly from San Antonio to Orlando. Now that they offer direct flights, we'll be looking at that. And it helps tremendously to get on the bus for 24 hours. On the way up is beautiful. On the way back, everyone's on their last nerve with everybody, so.
And I don't mean to skip you all, guys, but I didn't ask, is your program funded by the school or by the parents also?
It's a combination. We don't, the students pay $20. We charge them something, $20. They've got some skin in the game. But the Navy funds a lot of it, plus the school has a budget that ROTC uses and we massage that budget all year long so that at the end of the school year, it's, there's money there to pay for that.
I didn't mean to...
And then it's reimbursable from the Navy.
All chaperones would be, you have a background check and everything? They would have a background check through the school or through a private company?
No, through the school.
Okay.
And anyone that does anything with their kids, whether it be eating pizza on a Friday night, has to have a background check. And we do those through PermaWalker.
Yes.
She's really good at reminding us when we do a background check. That's not a background, so we'll get that goal.
And in your trip, all tips would be included in the $1,600?
Everything would be included, all meals, all attractions. Pretty much all I think the kid has to do is show up on that day and go on the trip. We don't do it to where they have to pay their meals out of pocket. Because then you run into a chance for someone, maybe you run out of money because you spent all your money on the first day and then have money to eat for the rest of the trip.
First gift shop.
Yeah, so everything's all included. And like I said, everyone has the same experience.
When my daughter went to here, we had to do a special fundraiser for tips. That's why I'm asking, are there tips? I mean, the expenses, believe me, they asked for a lot of money to go. So I knew they weren't going to run out. And they made sure they got a bank account where I was banking so I could put more money if they, you know. So, yes, I was not worried about that. No, okay, that's great.
I don't know if anyone have any questions, any other questions?
Okay, ready? Well, it's on the agenda as one item unless the work ones are separate. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the out-of-state field trip request for ROTC to Paris Island, South Carolina, and the High School Band and Choir going to Orlando, Florida, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Do we have motion administered recommendation? Jan, do we have a second? Ben, seconds? Any other questions, comments? It's a great opportunity for the kids. Paris Island, I've always heard good things about it and the band trips and everything that's good, they'll maintain. Very good. Any other questions, comments?
Just a little comment. So you do break their heart and tell them that if they join the service, they're actually going to the Marine Corps of California. If they join?
I have a girl there right now. She's in...
That's what you tell them? We're going to go over here, but y'all aren't really going to go. This is a beautiful place, right, but you're not going to come here again? It was just a joke. My dad thought he was going over there. Getting on the train going the other direction, sir.
Now, the girl that's there now, she had her choice, San Diego or Paris Island. And because she had been to Paris Island twice before, she wanted to go back and that's where she's right now.
It's good they gave them a choice.
Females, they do. Right now, the females get a choice. They can go San Diego or Paris Island.
You didn't have no choice, but you decided to go where they took you. Grab your bags.
There's Texas.
Yeah, here we go. All right, here are comments, questions. You all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion case, 6-0. Thank you very much. I know it's a couple of years away, Brad, but it's the planning that makes everything work right.
This is for next year, right? This is for this year.
Yeah, it's 2022.
22? Oh, that's right, oh. I'm used to y'all coming where it's a year ahead of you, ahead. Okay, this year. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Carr, would they get involved in the hospitality since...
I saw it somewhere though.
Because you know, Disney does a real good hospitality course and stuff like that. Next question.
All right, discussing the Center nomination resolution for Page Six, Board of Directors, New Assis County Appraisal District. Now, y'all... Now, y'all seen the stuff that was in the board packet? That maybe all the criteria and what the thing was and everything and who? How many votes each district has and every entity within the district? Does anyone have anybody that they think would, they want to be nominated for that? I know that a lot of times Cal Island, Porter Anzis gets in there a lot. So this is for the appraisal district? Does anybody have any?
I would like to nominate Eddie Martinez. He's an all-state agent and he's very familiar with.
All-state agent, okay. Now, you think he'd be pretty good with Cal Island as well?
It's a good guy.
Yeah, I know, that's what I mean. Because, see, with us and Cal Island, that's, I mean, we have the most votes. That's what I'm looking at this year. You get somebody in there that will be.
Yeah, he's in it to this football season, we're not in a wire robbery. No, he's, he's.
All right, good. So, yeah. We'll have to nominate now.
Is there anyone else?
Anybody else?
Okay.
So, we've got that. And so you'll get in touch with him to let him know, right?
Okay, so our, our motion then is administration's recommendation that Eddie Martinez be nominated for place six, Board of Directors, Nuasis County Appraisal District.
Thank you, Ms. Core. Do we have a motion submitted? Same two, mine's one.
Either way.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion case, five. Thank you very much. Okay, number nine, is discuss and consider approval of an adjunct facility, faculty agreement for San Patricio and Nuasis County.
All right, the Nuasis County and San Patricio Counties have livestock shows and they have other competition, homemaking items. And we would like for our students who participate in those while they're out of school to be given attendance credits. And so by signing, by agreeing to sign the, the forms, we're saying that we will allow the agri-science extension agents to serve as the classroom teacher for their day or days, however many it takes for them to be there. And they are qualified, they must have a bachelor's degree. And if, if you know some of them, they're, they do a lot of presentations and training with our youth.
That's the recommendation.
Okay, you want to, you ready for the motion?
If you want to have the recommendation, then we can discuss it, I think.
Okay. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve adjunct faculty agreement for San Patricio and Nuasis County as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Core. Do we have a motion for the new regulation? Stephen, do we have a second, please?
Kim.
Any comments or questions? This is something we've done every year for, as far as I can remember, on this one. Because a lot of kids and different things use these people. And if you notice going through the material, that they all have master's animal science, master's education, master edu, agriculture science, so they're, these people know what they're doing, talking about everything.
So this is an extension to, to the livestock show?
Yes.
And in the livestock show, we put students from all different groups through our 4H program. So this is the 4H program bill generator?
This is for the A and M Agri Extension?
Yes, students may be in 4H or FFA to participate in this. And then what follows is, is a resolution for extracurricular status. So there's really two motions on the table for this.
So in this, in this question here, I guess the question would be, would a student be eliminated from this for excessive absences? Because you're giving them, I mean, you're, you're allowing them to get a free absentee or credit, day of credit.
Understand.
So let's say that they approach this thing here and they're already surpassed their daily average and our, our daily attendance is so low, we're, we're going to give some free days away on top of the week that we give for, for the.
I would hope that the teacher who is in charge of that particular contest or organization would make a comment to that child that, you know, this is not just a free day.
Well, I think this should be a contract and agreement that their absentee rate is too high and they can't participate in this program.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. Each child that participates in these programs have to have a form signed from the registrar before they can even participate in these shows.
And that information has never been shared in the 12 years I've been on the board.
Well, I know when my, when my child participated, a form had to be signed to even participate. Grades and attendance had to be signed. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's still done, I'm just.
He's right there.
So, yes, there's a UIO eligibility piece to it that they have to be passing and in good standing. So if they are at 90-10 attendance requirement, that it must be in attendance 90% of days where they get credit for the class, still applies. The only thing the ag extension agency asks for is passing grades. Attendance is not one of the things that they ask for. If that's something you want to wish or add us to add on, you can. But really what it's saying is, with most of these kids, if they say they're going to go to the Houston Sock Show or whatever, they're going to take that unexcused absence if it's not excused by the, by all. So that's, that's where we're at. You're going to say that we're not going to allow them to go to those other shows. That's what they ask for each and every time. There's a form per show.
But it's just like UIO, they have to be passing before they even participate.
Just like UIO, attendance doesn't.
I think, well, that's true, but you're saying that attendance doesn't count.
Attendance does not count.
Attendance this year is very important to us.
Yes.
As, I mean, as we just reported, just last board meeting. So, I mean, this is where, you know, the river's meeting the road. You know, we need, we need the ADA, so.
But don't we get credit for them attending this?
Yes.
As a daily rate?
Yeah, we get credit.
Goes into the daily rate.
I understand that. But if they're, I'm saying, if you're, if you are not meeting a certain requirement, in other words, you're not just going to give them a free day to go to have the early.
Well, you're saying like they're at a truancy level already.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I don't think, you know.
I don't think we should reward them just because they're part of the club.
Like you said, it's just like UIO. UIO didn't have an attendance requirement either.
You know, so.
So you kick the kid out for?
Yeah, actually, well, actually, you do really, because it's going to affect their grade point. So, I mean, I understand.
With these kids too, that it would affect their grades also.
Yeah. But of course, you guys are not asking them to take days off just to go, go participate in any activity. These guys are. So there's your difference. They're still doing the day off if you're still in the school function.
You're getting this day off, you're getting the credit for.
Well, we, I mean, we can cancel the sport, the athletic programs and we could do that and everybody be in school.
Well, attendance is important, but if a child had COVID and he was out for two weeks, but then he gets well, I don't think we should hold that against him. I think he should be able to participate if he's, if he has passing grades.
These programs are teaching our kids, whether it be athletics or agricultural, they're learning, they're learning from this, many different things. They're making them well-rounded children.
Comments and questions? You all those in favor? Opposed? Motion case, five. Discuss and consider resolution for extracurricular status of 4H organizations.
Were there any questions about becoming extracurricular? You had the flyer in your packet. It says, be hereby resolved that upon the date the duly elected Board of Trustees of the Tulsa Midway ISD meeting in public with a quorum present and certified did adopt the resolution that recognizes the Nuasis County 4H organization as approved for recognition and eligible for extracurricular status, consideration under 19 of the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 76.1, retained extracurricular activities. Participation by 4H members under provisions of this resolution are subject to all rules and regulations set forth under the 19 Texas Administrative Code interpreted by the board and designated officials of this school district. Texas A&amp;M Agri Life Extension will request academic eligibility for all 4H competitive activities, regardless if a school absence is or is not required and for non-competitive purposes when an absence is required.
Thank you. What goes along with that, I don't know, for 10?
Chrissy, did we get one for San Patricio?
I mean, number nine. The next one.
There's two of them, yes.
Number nine is the San Patricio one.
Okay.
Number nine was the adjunct faculty agreement?
That was the adjunct. Number 10 is the resolution.
Yes, and both resolutions are included.
Yes, both resolutions that are in here.
Discussion?
Comments, questions?
What's the total absentee date that the student can have regardless of his academics, athletics, or whatever activity?
So they must meet the 90-10, who wants to gain full credit. So it's per class, not necessarily per day. So, for instance, if a student might be 100% attendance but miss a period, you know, let's say 18 times, they will lose credit for that individual class. But since you're calling it an extracurricular activity, this would not count towards that absence. If you counted it as a non-extracurricular activity, then it would count against them as an absence.
So then they'll be allowed to surpass that legal number of absentees. By, by approving this, we're allowing them more days than the average student, regardless of it's COVID or not.
What you're doing is you're substituting that day of attendance for this day of a different type of learning. So they still have to meet the same number of minutes requirements for the day. Like we can't get off at 2:00 and just go home. They still must meet that, whoever their sponsor is, must meet that individual requirement. And most of them in the ag program far exceed that. They're there all day long, whether it's grooming their animals and, and doing whatever it is they need to do. So they far exceed those amount of minutes for a school day.
But the school still gets credit for attendance?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Core?
All right. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the resolution for extracurricular status of 4H organization as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Core. We have a motion administered recommendation. Please, Stephen, motion? Give him a second, thank you. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion case, five. I'm just going to discuss and consider timeline for board self-evaluation and superintendent evaluation.
I prepared a sheet for you that has, at our September 20th board meeting, which is today, to approve of the timeline of evaluation activities for the board and the superintendent to participate in evaluation activities. And then each month, as you can see on here, there is something for board members to do, board training, and board meeting, what is to happen until you get to February where the superintendent's been evaluated and has a chance to respond to the evaluation. Any questions?
I like this timeline. This is the idea of where we are and how we can stay on track as we go forward.
It will start with the board self-evaluation, which I understand the board has done in the past. And it's how, how well you work together as a team of eight. And then we talk about my evaluation. And it's done, of course, in closed session. And then you take whatever action.
So when was the last board evaluation?
I think it was when Rodney Sumner was superintendent.
What year was that?
2019?
Yeah, I think because COVID.
Maybe 2020? Maybe 2020? It was not done last year, is my understanding.
It wasn't 20 because I was here.
Yeah, it's COVID.
You didn't do it before? Okay.
It was early 20.
Yeah.
Okay.
When Dr. Vidial came in.
Yes.
She came in twice, the one, early, early.
Everybody liked the, looked at the timeline and had opportunity to look at it this weekend and everything. It gives us a direction, it gives us some guidance and everything, it helps us all. You know, the developmental process, along with all the other training that we take.
On the November, the board training that discussed the developed goals, is that going from our TASB workshop that we had on April the 20th, developing our goals?
That, we're going to have, they, they are somewhere, some, the goals, the ones that we developed with TASB.
We started it, but there wasn't a conclusion on the strategies and objectives to reach those goals and what those goals were actually. Some of them were House Bill mandated, two of them were.
Well, we never got nothing back from TASB.
Well, you have to have that one on the early childhood reading and math scores. Then you have to have one on college career military readiness. And those will be, those results will be given to you at the November board meeting.
But were those, Dr. White, do you recall if those were received from TASB?
I have not gotten an update on that. I actually asked, but I have not heard back.
That question has come up at a couple of board meetings and nobody's ever come up with them. So apparently TASB has not given us anything yet.
And do any of you have anything in your, anything in your notes?
Holly, do you recall?
We have not received.
Okay, if it's, and it's not in the minutes, so perhaps we need to start over.
It could be a process, but that's.
It is a process.
Yeah, that, that's, that's not what we're discussing.
No, I, I understand that, but we still have to.
Yes.
Develop those goals.
Yes. Okay, but everybody likes this right here, right?
Okay, it is.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Core.
It is administration's recommendation that the board approve the board self-evaluation and superintendent evaluation timeline as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Core. Do we have a motion administered recommendation? Jan, motion, do we have a second? Kim? Any other comments or questions?
I do, I mean, you're talking about October, November, December, January, February. I mean, are these all board, are these all going to be done? Are they scheduled board meetings that were going to be here or are there different dates? I mean, I couldn't tell you what I'm doing December the 13th yet. So how am I going to vote on something that I might not even know what I'm doing yet? You haven't given me a chance to even look. I mean, you know.
These are board meeting dates. And the reason for doing December the 13th, that is the, that is not the third Monday. But the third Monday is Christmas holidays.
And are you doing that for November also? Is that what you're doing for November also? Because the 15th is not the third Monday either.
There's many times we have more than one board meeting.
Depending on 10.
I thought it was. Well, I understand, but they're subject to dates and availability of facilitators.
Yes, sir, it is November 15th for the.
That's the third Monday?
Yes, because if the month starts on Monday is the first.
I'll get a calendar.
15th is the first. The other ones that just have a two-month range will depend on finding somebody to present the training. And I don't know when that will be. We're not really asking you if you're going to come, we're asking if you support the timeline.
I would like to come, but I hate to vote on something and commit myself to something three, four months down the road and not be able to do it. And then you're going to, you're going to solidify that date as training.
Well, if it turns out people can't come, then we can change the calendar. Revis it. Come back to you and say, you didn't do it for whatever reason. it, come back to you and say, you didn't do it for whatever reason.
Well, like Dr. Vidial, she canceled twice, I guess, on this.
Oh, did she? Okay, she's good.
We were never able to complete that training.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion case five, one. Thank you very much. Okay. I move into our consent agenda discussion. There was a quarterly investment report on this tax collection rate, July financials, check register, four media minutes. Ms. Corr.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about the information that was given to you? I have a question for Philip. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Corr. Do we have a motion administrative recommendation? I'll make the motion. Do we have a second, please? Ben seconds, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion case six, zero, thank you very much. We're going to close meeting at this time. The board will convene in a closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Governor Code, Chapter 5511, if possible, Texas Governor Code, Section 551.07, seven hundred, consultation with the legal counsel regarding legal issues pertaining COVID-19 resolution regarding application of policy EIC local, excuse me, discuss the revision of the Board of Trustees' resolution passed April 20th, 2020, regarding grading, GPA, class rank, board discussion deployment of certified personnel, 551.074, TM safety management update, a closed session out of regardless action, the board shall take such action only commending an open section, 551.102, a self-care agenda of closed session and maintained, 551.103, and items opposed and disclosed, accordance with them all, 551.0104. It is 8:52 PM on September the 20th, 2021.
Could we take about a five-minute break and then come back?
Yes.
All right, there.
We're being recessed. Okay, it is 10:38 PM, September the 20th, 2021. We're back in open session. Ms. Corr.
Okay, our first one is consideration of possible action regarding adoption of revisions to April 20th, 2020 board resolution related to applications of policy EIC local for the 2019-20 school year.
Do we have a motion administrative recommendation, please? Thank you, Ben. Do we have a second? Thank you, Kim. You have the comments or resolution, I mean, comments or questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion case six, zero. Amendment to the Board of Trustees' of Tulsa Midway ISD resolution passed April the 20th, 2020, changes proposed on September 20th, 2021, regarding grading, GPA, and class rank, whereas the Board of Trustees passed a resolution regarding the grading, GPA, and class rank dated April 20th, 2020, and whereas the Board of Trustees desires to amend that resolution to read as follows. Whereas on March 19th, 2020, the Texas Governor issued Executive Order Number GA08 relating to COVID-19, preparedness and mitigation, and through this action and in accordance with guidance from the President ordered a temporary closure of all Texas school districts. Whereas on March 26th, 2020, Tulsa Midway Independent School District began closure of the district to protect the health and safety of staff and students. Whereas in light of the pandemic health crisis which resulted in a national and state order of sheltering in place and a state order closing all schools within the state of Texas through May 29th, 2020, all students in the district were impacted. Whereas the board has implemented procedures to contend, continued, continuity of instruction to the extent possible during the district closure. Whereas the board finds that a need exists to temporarily adjust local policy provisions addressing class rank under these circumstances to ensure that fair and consistent designation of local honors. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Tulsa Midway Independent School District that the district finds a substantial public purpose exists to temporarily modify board policy EIC local for the 29, 2019-20 school year for certain students as follows. For all and only the students in the graduating classes of 20 and 21, class rank and GPA will not be calculated at the end of the fifth grading period as stated in the current board policy EIC local. Rather, class rank and GPA will be calculated based on the semester average at the end of the third grading period of 2019 and 2020 school year, which has always been calculated and reported. For all classes that begin during the spring semester of the 2019-2020 school year, all students' grades will be recorded and reported numerically, and transcripts will denote a course credit as a number numeric average between semesters one and two. GPA calculations going forward for all classes of 2022 and 2023 only, and will only, will not include the spring 2020 semester. Therefore, for example, a current junior or senior who completes high school within four years will have a total GPA calculated on seven semesters rather than eight semesters. After graduation of the class of 2020, board policy EIC local will resume without modification in the 2021 school year with the sole exception of the GPA calculation impact described in Section 3 above, passed and approved by the majority of the members of the Board of Trustees on this 20th day of September 2021. The vote is passed already.
All right, you guys want to inform certified personnel? I'm here to recommend that you hire Diamond St. John, Assistant Principal at the middle school.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Give him seconds. Any comments or questions? Very good, okay. All those in favor? As opposed, motion case six, zero. Thank you very much.
And on the last one, explore options for security officers and our own police force and report back to the board.
That's.
We're going to take.
We're going to take it.
Yeah, that, we're, yeah, we're just waiting for more information on that.
Okay.
Because that's a closed session out of what it did with security, so it's something to discuss in closed session. So, take care of the two items that need to be afforded on, correct? Employment and.
Yes.
Modified resolution. I would like to thank Dr. White and Mr. Trump for all this and discovering everything, getting this straight, and Ms. Neely, of course, and Ms. Corr. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Corr, any further business? There is no further business. It is 10:44 PM, September 20th. You have to turn the motion to adjourn. Sam makes the motion. Leo, a second. Ben, second. All those in favor? Motion case six, zero.
No, 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 I'm going to vote for that one.